Like to call the order, the March 24th, Clive City Council Meeting. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Very good. We appreciate having PAC 48 here to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone here would rise and we'll allow you to lead us.
The allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before you leave, could you introduce who the scouts are and introduce the leadership as well?
Sure. My name is Mark Rudge and this is my son Charlie.
And my name is Jen DeCook and this is Bobby Rex and Peter James. And we are the combined Wolf and Bear Pack of 248.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Do your best.
There was also another scout who couldn't.
Moving on, I think the next thing is approval of agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So our agenda is approved. Next thing I'd like to do is read a proclamation honoring Bob Johnston, declaring this week as Bob Johnston Remembrance Week. Whereas on February 26th, we lost a member of the Clive family when Bob Johnston passed away following a battle with cancer. And whereas Bob first appeared at a council meeting on January 31st, 1985, as an attorney for Marbella and Company regarding a developer requested annexation. And whereas on September 9th, 1987, Bob represented the Iowa Municipal Workers Compensation Association before the council regarding bonds and a 2080 agreement with the city for a new workers' comp insurance pool. And whereas during the March 28th, 1991 council meeting, Bob was present for a motion to approve tax income financing for Country Club West and for the city to retain Bob as a bond attorney. From there, Bob, working with Dorsey and Whitney, he served as the city's bond counsel for 30 years. Whereas Bob purchased a home in Clive on Country Club Lake in 2006, lived there until last month. And whereas Bob served as a trusted advisor, mentor, and friend to hundreds of communities, government officials, and economic development professionals across the state. And whereas March 23rd would have been Bob's 80th birthday. Now therefore, I, John Edwards, Mayor of the City of Clive, do proclaim this week as Bob Johnston Remembrance Week in the City of Clive in witness whereup. So I'll just take a moment and just express our gratitude to Bob and just have a brief moment of silence. Thank you all for remembering Bob. Before we move into the rest of the agenda, I do want to mention the operating tenants for the council meeting. We support the pillars of character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. So with that, we'll move on to our presentations. And we have our chiefs coming forward with some good news and things that we'd like to share. So chiefs.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, it's our pleasure to award lifesaving medals and fire department awards for a number of people who over the last year have committed or have, in the course of their duty, have saved lives in our community. We want to take tonight to honor several of those. I have the pleasure of going over the first two incidents and honoring some people involved. And if I call, when I call your name, please come up and stand over here and to be recognized. We're recognizing from the West Des Moines Engine 220, Ryan Gordon, Kyle Mikulich, and Gordon Hedrick. And from the Clive Police Department, Sergeant Dan Anderson, and Officers James Avon and Dylan Vento. On August 21, 2021, an adult male was found unresponsive in the bathroom from an apparent heroin overdose. Family called 911 and began CPR with instructions from the Westcom 911 call taker. Police officers James Avon, Dylan Vento, and Sergeant Dan Anderson arrived first. Officer Avon took over CPR from family members. Officer Vento prepared an AED and Sergeant Anderson administered Narcan intranasally. The AED was applied and resuscitation efforts continued. On arrival of Engine 220 crew, the patient had a pulse but was not breathing effectively. Engine 220 took over the treatment and began breathing for the patient until an IV was established and additional Narcan was administered. The patient then began breathing on his own, awoke, and was transported in stable condition to the hospital by ambulance. So with that, Mayor, if you'd like to do the honors. And these are for the police officers.
You guys shout them off?
Well, I'd like to, if you all gentlemen would like to join us. And I'm in the [inaudible] ready to kind of turn sideways. And there's a pivot right there.
All right. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
The second event occurred March, I'm sorry, August 17th of 2021. And we're honoring tonight Officers Devonte Clark and Officer Kyle Halsey. You guys want to come up? On August 17th, 2021, Officers Devonte Clark and Kyle Halsey responded to a reported overdose. They arrived to find an adult male unresponsive, cyanotic, and not breathing in the bathroom from an apparent narcotic overdose. Officer Clark initiated CPR. Officer Halsey prepared and delivered a dose of Narcan. At that time, the patient was assessed to be breathing on his own and regained consciousness. EMS arrived and the patient was transported again in stable condition to the hospital by ambulance. And, Your Honor?
One, two, three. Matt, can I?
I got you.
Great, thanks, sir.
Our next event is from New Year's Day this year. It was an event at 7130 Garrison Road where we were working with Windsor Heights. And I'd like to welcome up Lieutenant Garrett Foreman. Two other members, Pat Thomas and Nicole Pontir, cannot be here tonight. So you'll be our solo recipient for all. On this event, Engine 320 assisted, responded to assist Windsor Heights with a cardiac arrest. On arrival, the Windsor Heights Fire Crew has initiated CPR and we're conducting resuscitation. Windsor Heights Police Officers were assisting with an AED. Fire Crews assisted with Lieutenant Foreman assisting with securing an airway and overall scene coordination. Firefighter Paramedic Pontir assisted with care on scene and then assisted the ambulance crew during transport. Firefighter Paramedic Thomas assisted with equipment and was instrumental in caring for and communicating with the family who were all present during the resuscitation. The patient had a successful outcome and was discharged from the hospital. Our last event to recognize is from January 25th of this year at 7625 Hickman Road in Urbandale. Unfortunately, none of this crew could be here tonight, but we do want to recognize them. Sean Sutton, Jeremy Anis, Brian Coster, Nicole Pontir, and Pat Thomas. I just want to make sure nobody's not getting at the last minute. A little bit about their event, they were called to motel relax for a patient with difficulty breathing. On arrival, the patient that they found had a long history of medical issues, was found unresponsive, without a pulse and not breathing while sitting in a chair. Resuscitation efforts were initiated with CPR to provide blood flow and oxygenation, medications for cardiac applications, and airway innovation to secure the airway. The patient regained a pulse following these efforts with the ability to breathe prior to being transported to the hospital and had a successful outcome. So wonderfully done for them and I wish they could be here, but they had other obligations.
Denny Henderson's in the house. Before we move into the Clive Community Services update, we also want to see if there's anyone here in the chamber who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda in our citizen presentation time slot. Anyone here to do that this evening? Anyone online, Pete?
Thank you, Your Honor, for those participating online. You can get our attention using the raise hand function at the bottom of your Zoom screen. You'll see a little smiley face emoji. If you click that, you should be able to then see the raise hand emoji. Click that and we'll be able to bring you into the meeting.
Your Honor, I do not see any hands going up.
Thank you very much. Well, next move to the Clive Community Services Update. Stephanie.
Hello, everybody. I'm Stephanie Horak. I'm from Urbandale, 14104 Urbandale, Firewood Lane in Urbandale. I wanted to come every year, either Lisa or I come every year, and thank you guys for all of your support. This year was a challenging year. Of course, you know, we're still got the pandemic going on and then the fire. On May 20th, we had a fire at our location. And so we were displaced until just recently, I would say within the last couple of months. So we're back in, we're seeing clients, we're seeing clothing shoppers, we're seeing patients. We're almost back to normal. I've got a few nitpicky little repairs, some trim work I don't like, some broken tile I don't like. There's dust everywhere I'm complaining about. But yeah, we're back in, we're serving clients and we're so grateful for all of your support always. But especially this year, the firefighters, the fire marshal, the fire chief. I mean, they took a lot of time with me and I really appreciate it. And the city inspectors were there all the time during the rebuilding. So I know that a lot of city resources went to helping us and I really appreciate it. So, any questions?
Yes.
Stephanie, I remember back in 2012, 13, when Principal Gilotti over at Crestview talked about the need for human services.
Oh, Gilotti, yeah.
Gilotti, yeah, John Gilotti. You know, and that was just kind of an idea at the time. And in talking with Linda Shank, she really started the ball rolling and you folks have done a wonderful job. You know, the fire was a setback to you, but I had a chance with Councilmember Bell, as a matter of fact, to go over and tour the facility and just take a look at the wonderful job you guys have done. Things are ready to roll and it looks really good. I mean, I remember when I was there in 2016 and many of us were there for the grand opening. And you've come a long way in the last six, seven years. So as far as fulfilling the needs in Clive and other areas, we talked about how it wasn't just Clive. It was the greater metro and working with DMARC and fulfilling people's need. And we also talked a bit about, you know, the future and future collaborations with potential new sites and new services with education, with mentorships, with adult education, and with other things, how we can help some of those folks out there. So you guys are doing a great job and look forward to continue to support you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right. The next item on our agenda would be consent.
Resolution.
Motion in a second. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes five to zero. And next we have an introduction to a new firefighter paramedic. Rick.
Mayor and council, it's my privilege to introduce you tonight to Aaron Anderson, who is our newest firefighter paramedic. Comes to us from West Des Moines EMS with eight years of experience there. Prior to that, had seven years of experience working the emergency room at Iowa Methodist, now Unity Point. Brings for special certifications. He's got his critical care paramedic certification. And all that I'm answering, I think he's most excited about in Clive, he's going to have the opportunity to learn the firefighting side of the house and go through that training and that experience. And Aaron.
Thank you all for allowing me to serve the City of Clive. Looking forward to it and thanking my wife and son for allowing me to do things and put them under a little more stress than normal.
Welcome. We're very glad to have you here. Anything from the council?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. First action item we have on the agenda is public hearing. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, it was published in the Des Moines Register, March 11th, 2022.
Thank you.
And this is the assessments for the 2021 Sidewalk Assessment Program. The assessments were completed this far, the fall of 2021. Before you tonight is the assessment schedule of those properties that did not pay for the repairs to their sidewalks. In the interim period between the time the agenda was created and tonight, three of those properties have actually paid. So I would recommend approval of the resolution with the one amendment to remove those properties that have paid. That is it. Any questions?
To the resolution with the amendment.
Close the public hearing.
Close public hearing.
Second.
Motion was by McCoy and I believe the second was by Susan. Close the public hearing. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote to close the public hearing? And will clerk please post that vote? And the votes, close the hearing passes by a vote of five to zero. So the hearing has been closed. Now we need a resolution.
Move the resolution, fix the amounts along with friendly amendment.
Second.
Okay. We have a resolution to fix the amounts with the subtraction of the three that have already paid. Further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And then would clerk please post that vote? And that resolution passes by a vote of five to zero. Next would be a public hearing on the FY 2223 budget. And did we publish notice on that as well?
Yes, Your Honor, that was published March 7th, 2022 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you. Liz?
Good evening. What you have before you tonight is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2320, 2223 budget based on the direction that you provided us in the budget work sessions this year. We put it in final form for you. The budget hearing was published as required by law and we've not received any comments to date on the budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Any questions for Liz, otherwise?
I would also like to add just a few comments, Your Honor, too. In terms of the budget that's proposed before you this year, you know, happy to report this will be the seventh consecutive year that we'll be maintaining, proposing to maintain the tax rate at 1014. One thing I would mention though is that we're going to definitely have some challenges going forward, both on the revenue and expenditure side. There's currently a bill moving forward in the legislature to create another new backfill related to property tax credits that will likely have a reduction in revenue to the city in the future. So these will be some things that we're going to be talking about very intently with you all with some proposals and options going forward as we navigate the environment over the next couple of years. But really want to thank the staff for doing the hard work of putting this budget together and their financial stewardship that you've seen throughout the years in terms of where budgets end up and the actuals every year. And of course, thanks to the council for working through quite a bit of information every year with the budget process and the proposals and the workshops in January and into February. This budget delivers on your key priorities as you laid out in your strategic planning with one of the highlights being the experimental programming at the Harbach Center, which we'll look forward to giving you a tour of here very soon while also adding staff in areas of water resources, maintenance going forward. These are key priorities that the council's laid out and we're looking forward to your consideration and approval of this budget to implement those priorities. So with that, Your Honor, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Before we move to close the public hearing, is there anyone here in the chamber that wishes to address the council on the budget or online? Pete?
For those online, you can use the raise hand emoji to get our attention.
And while we're doing that, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close public hearing.
Second. A motion, a second to close the public hearing. Do we have anyone to participate?
No, Your Honor.
Hearing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? So that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution approving the FY 2223 budget.
Motion in a second to approve the budget. Further discussion, hearing none, would the council please vote? And then would clerk please post? And the budget is approved by a vote of five to zero. Liz, you're still up here with some.
I am. Well, as you all know, the AAA bond rating was affirmed by Moody's following our rating call a few weeks back. We had an exciting day and I'm going to have Suzanne from PFM lead us through the discussion regarding our sale. While she is approaching the podium here, I would like to just share appreciation that staff has for not only PFM, but also Dorsey and Whitney that helped us put this all together. So Suzanne, go ahead and share the news.
All right. So good evening. The bid tabulation was just passed around with the results of the sale today. We went to market with $4 million, $4 million of GEO Corporate Purpose Bonds, Series 2022A, structured over 10 years, and these are all paid for by the debt service levy and the $1.48 debt service levy that was part of the budget that was just approved. We received six bids from 39 different firms today with the winning bid coming from Piper Sandler in syndicate with Cantor Fitzgerald and Truist Securities. The true interest cost, not as excited to bring this news, but still good news tonight, 2.21%. Rates have risen significantly. I think we've all been hearing in the news, the Fed is talking six to eight rate hikes this year, maybe more. Since we prepared the sale details in January 21st, rates have gone up 90 basis point, 0.9% just in that short period of time. So this is the first time I think that we've ever not met PFM's estimates. We're usually very conservative. We actually came in seven basis points over PFM's original estimate. So you priced better than our estimate, but the market moved much more 90 basis points. We had 50 basis points of timing. Final pricing, final pricing, we had estimated 15 basis points or points 1.5 over the AAA scale. You actually priced 10 basis points over the AAA scale. So you priced even better than what PFM had estimated. And that's based on your AAA rating. These are bank qualified 10 years and so, you know, obviously very sought after credit in the market today. You know, just for your information, the AA1, there were other people in the market with AA1 today. That spreads probably 12 to 25 basis points. So there is definitely the benefit you're getting from that AAA rating today. So with that, I don't know if anyone has any questions. The rates range, I always like to talk about the cover bid, right? That second place bid was just one basis point off. That always tells you the closer those first and second place bidders, the more competitive it was to get the bonds today. And the last place bidder was at 234. So that kind of shows you pretty tight spreads today between the first and last place. So very pleased we got the best we could today and you priced very well in the market today where we are. So happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Suzanne, you want to talk about the premium too on this one?
Yes. Because, because the market thinks interest rates are going to rise, that means they're going to bid at a premium. That means they're going to ask you to pay a coupon rate that is higher than the yield to maturity rate. So there was $460,000 of premium on the bonds today that the city is keeping to put towards other projects. We have the ability to resize, to just take the original project fund amount, which was 3.9 million, or we can keep that premium and then just pay the, it's not free money. Premium is money that you pay back with interest, but it is a result of the price. We assume the bonds would price at 100%. They priced over 100%, so that yields extra bond proceeds. And so knowing that there are certain projects that are coming in over budget, the city opted to take the bond, the premium today, knowing that the likelihood of rates being higher next year, magic eight ball, very likely, very likely that rates will be higher next year. So kept the premium today.
For the council's benefit, this has been the discussion ongoing today. One of the keys with, when you're taking that sizable of a premium is how does it fit in with the debt service levy? Because again, you're still paying the interest on that additional premium. We've done those calculations. We feel it's very manageable within the existing $1.48 levy. And I would recommend that the council accept this bid and take that premium because as we've been sharing information, particularly with the joint project with the City of Urbandale and those costs coming in substantially higher for the Meredith Analysis Road intersection bid, we're anticipating about a $600,000 additional funds needed for that. That project was already in this bond schedule to be paid for. So my recommendation is to take that entire premium and put it towards that project. And, and we're not affecting our debt service levy. We're getting indications from Urbandale that they're going to go ahead and proceed with, with that. They're obviously taking a much bigger hit on their end of it. They're a much bigger portion of that project. They haven't finalized that, but that's what we anticipate. So what staff would do with this additional premium is put it towards that Alice's Road Meredith Construction Project that gets us about 80 to 90% of the way there of that additional. So it was 1.4 million was the engineer's estimate. Our portion of the division came in at two minutes, our share would be 2 million. So we got 600,000 to make up. That 450 gets us pretty far the way there. And we've got some other street, you know, roadway cash that we can look at in the future here to mitigate that. So that's part of the reason why we want to present that premium to you and why they've been running the numbers today on making sure we can keep that. making sure we can keep that within the existing debt service levy. So that's, that's a part of, I want to add that on to Suzanne's recommendation here before you tonight.
Thank you, Matt. So what we're looking for is the resolution.
Move the resolution. We're in the general obligation for bonds to the low bidder Piper Sandler Company, Cantor Fitzgerald Trust Securities.
Is there, and we have a second, second, further discussion? If not, with the council, please vote. And will clerk, please post that vote? So the vote on the GEO bonds passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Emerald Isle rezoning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew, could you turn the doc camera for me? So tonight we have the second consideration of the rezoning from R one to PUD Planning and Development for the Emerald Isle Townhome Project. The developer is here tonight if you do have additional questions. But I did have a couple of items to follow up with you on from the conversation at the last council meeting. So we haven't received any additional public comments on the project from what you had previously heard. And there haven't been any substantial changes to the site layout. One of the items we had discussed at planning the zoning commission in the previous council meeting was the adjacent property owner right here, their request that this shared property line actually just be a standard six foot wooden privacy fence rather than the reduced landscape buffer we had been talking about. Or actually any form of landscape buffer. They said they completely preferred the fence. So I know some of the council had questions about that and the impact that could have for our future phases of what we anticipate to be redevelopment in this area. So staff has discussed and discussed with the developer that the development agreement language would stipulate that the owners association, once they take over, and in the meantime, the developer, if that's not an immediate transition, would be the ones responsible for constructing and maintaining the fence. But the development agreement would stipulate that that fence actually, you know, air quotes, belongs to the adjacent property. So at the time that property developed, they would be able to remove the fence without any additional cooperation or agreement from the Townhome Association. Similar to the process we're going through here. For this rezoning, the adjacent properties would also have to rezone for redevelopment. So we could reinforce that expectation that the fence go away and these properties live harmoniously. Assuming it is a similar density residential development next to this project. So we would be able to then reinforce that the expectation is the fence goes down. Or, you know, say that it does go commercial or something else, there is the opportunity then to convert to the more traditional buffer. If that was desire, the desire at the time of redevelopment. So that is how staff is proposing to move forward with that portion of it. I'll stop there in case there's questions or discussion about that. The next thing I'll talk about a little bit is the drainage way to the north.
Any questions at this point?
And any feedback to the neighbors?
No, they seemed happy and content after the last meeting and the planning zoning discussion, when I told them that we were amending the development agreement to specify the fence requirement. So I haven't heard anything additional from them. Okay, with that, I will transition to talk about the drainage way. We have a couple example images here of what the end aesthetic goal would be for that northern area. Again, the plans won't really be changed for the development concept here since this is more of a site plan and preliminary plat to get down to those final grading and landscaping details. But you can see here, this is an example of some of the aesthetic that would be looking for that area. So you have the shorter native grasses, some of the stone brought in for maintaining the basin area and then some pooling there. You can see the trail with some benches going along beside it. And then for some of the areas that are steeper in the drainage way, there is also this kind of aesthetic that could go with that with the smaller, not really crushed stone, but smaller pieces of stone through the bottom with some trees and other vegetation that would do well in that kind of drainage way wet environment. So that is what the end goal aesthetic would be for that area. The trail component, the installation of that and the landscaping final design would be what satisfies the monetary parkland requirement. In this case, again, with Stonegate Park being so close, the city didn't have a benefit to acquiring an additional, you know, approximately half acre parcel of land. So the trail improvement was really what staff felt was in the best interest for the parkland dedication long term to help get these residents over to Stonegate Park. The developer had pitched the possibility of a dog park, but staff felt that at this time with the other single family homes so close that that's probably not a great thing to do right now. But that could be something that was incorporated for the residents with future redevelopment onto the east if it was more appropriate at that time. But those can take quite a bit of maintenance and obviously dogs bark and run when they play. So we didn't want to impose that on the Reiners while they're still living there and just felt that that was better to eliminate from the plans at this time. So this is why we wanted to do the trail and landscaping. So I would take any questions you might have on that.
Any questions on this one? Again, we're looking at the second reading.
Correct.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 eight. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption. Second.
Here we have the motion in a second for the second reading. Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will the clerk, please post that? So the second reading passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Now we're looking at the utility rate adjustments.
Back up here again. As a result of our budget discussions and what we've prepared in the budget is the appropriate next step would be to move forward with the cash flows provided by PFM and getting your new utility rates in place. Clive's rates are proposed to stay at the mid to low tier, which is as it relates to the comparable cities, other comparable cities. And it's really evident that the city is committed to reinvesting in our infrastructure. So we incorporated a three percent increase on the water rates for the upcoming fiscal year. Sewer rates would be at a two percent increase and water is at a 10% increase. And that is how we prepared the ordinances for you. In addition, we included a resolution increasing the solid waste rate 14% for residential collection as a pass through of the solid waste and recycling costs from Metro Waste Authority. Per council direction during the utility discussions, this would be the last time you see the storm or excuse me, the, the solid waste. Say that wrong, stormwater rate structure because staff would be preparing them that tiered structure that we talked about in our discussions. After we go through the third readings and the ordinances are approved, they're scheduled to go into effect in May, which is just in time for being billed in June and then collection in July. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Liz on this, otherwise we get a series of first readings.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 five, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion a second for that ordinance, further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk, please post that vote? So the first reading on the water rates passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 six, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
The motion in a second. Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will clerk, please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Yes, sir. Move that ordinance number one, 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 seven. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
We motion in a second. Further discussion, yes.
I'm always a little hesitant when we look at double digit rate increases, but when we look at stormwater, it's something different. When you look at Clive and extensive renovations we're doing, I think it warrants a little bit of an explanation right there. And we made a commitment to stormwater management and, you know, this is just example of us following up on it. As painful it is, it's a reality of, of the weather patterns that we live in. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, with the council, please vote and clerk, please post that vote. And so stormwater rates pass by a vote of five to zero.
I'll move a resolution approving the revised solid waste rates, since I'm assuming you're going to abstain.
Still make the motion, but yes, sir, that's good.
So just, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We motion a second on the solid waste rates, further discussion. And with the council, please vote and with clerk, please post that vote. And that vote passes with four yes and one abstention. Thank you. Now we're going to move into our discussion of the Economic Vitality Committee.
Matt? Thank you, your honor. Follow up to our work session, your all's work session in early February on this topic where we discussed the Economic Vitality Committee. What's included in your packet tonight is really the formalization of that committee based on your feedback and direction that night. We've put together a document that's really the kind of a founding document for the kit, for the committee. It outlines the establishment of it, the membership, most importantly, the roles and responsibility responsibilities of the committee really outlines that. We didn't want to get too specific. We wanted to make sure it kind of hit the broad brushes of what the council wanted to see with this committee and then a meeting schedule along with it. What we've also done is the, the memo that was included in the early February work session, we've updated it to reflect a lot of the direction and changes, the name, for example, and it also has kind of a schedule of pending your action here tonight where we would go moving forward in terms of securing membership for the committee. So it really would start after your action here tonight. We've amended basically the council's Boarding Commission application process to include this committee appointment. And what we would do is staff would put together kind of an email invite for, for you all to forward to people that you know that might be interested in it. We'll include the application with that, have them submit that back. We'll also publicize it on our website and our social media over the, the month of April to secure applications. And then the mayor, Councilwoman Judkins, myself would review those and then the mayor would present back to you all in May, a list of appointees for the kind of that nine to thirteen member range. That would make sense for the establishment of this committee for your adoption of those appointments. And then we would move forward with the first meeting of the committee in June to start tackling a number of topics that we have in this particular area. Most importantly, a lot of things that are, this council's been talking about quite a bit related to District One, University Corridor, flood prone property buyout area and, and the kind of the list that's included in the memo that we talked about last time of various economic development, economic vitality projects throughout the community. So with that, I hope this reflects the kind of the direction and intent that the council wanted to see with this committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those items and would encourage your consideration and approval of formalizing the committee.
Questions for Matt? If not, we need a resolution.
Move to prove a resolution.
Resolution in a second, further discussion.
Just real quick, I thought it was a really good program and I want to congratulate Councilwoman Judkins on really pushing this. She's been, you know, one of the key driving forces on this for a long time. And Matt, I really appreciate staff's help on this. I thought it was dialed in. It was very much detail oriented to the point. And I think I look forward to, to seeing some, some great stuff come out of this.
Any further discussion? If not, would the council, please vote? And then would the clerk, please post that vote? And that passes five to zero. Matthew, do we have any correspondence we don't have?
Everything was in the packet, your honor.
Thank you very much. We'll start our reports on your end, Pete.
Thank you, your honor. So as I mentioned, when we discussed the community engagement strategy in December for this year, I noted that we would be doing a lot of projects that put us immediately in people's front yards on their street, on the sidewalk, doing a lot of things. And as the weather has improved, that puts us now right in that season to be doing that work. So it's not, I've got a few updates across a number of projects. First, we had our monthly check-in with MetroNet earlier this week. We're still looking at a total completion that will happen sometime this fall unless they have a big hang up someplace. But they still think at this point they can get it all done. The places where they're most active right now, where you might want to keep an eye out for places where there's restoration work that needs to be done or any other problems is going to be from the Country Club neighborhood east to the interstate and from the interstate through the Clark Street neighborhood over to a hundredth. So that's where there, most of the activity is at right now, but through the summer and the spring and fall, we're going to see them still throughout lots of different parts of the city, including and the near future along university as they finish their loop that will be going around all of Clive. The other big thing that they're working on is restoration work from the winter work that they did. There's a couple of spots, one in particular over in the Country Club neighborhood where they missed the mark and had to go back and do some work all over again. Still pretty torn up over there and we want to make sure that they are working closely with those residents to make sure that they do the restoration the way that they promised us that they would do. So we'll keep a good eye on that. I want to give a great shout out to our public works team, especially Jared, who's been absolutely vigilant with these MetroNet crews to the point of MetroNet themselves saying, we don't want to screw up in Clive during our meeting that we had earlier this month, that that's only because of the vigilance of Jared and that public works team. They did a good job. Next, soil quality restoration. So you, I believe, have heard that we got our hundred thousand dollar grant from the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship for what urban water quality projects. Our application was ambitious. We want to get a hundred SQR projects done using those funds still here in two thousand twenty-two, which means that folks like me and others who work on our water resources projects are going to be getting their hands dirty and engaging with a whole lot of residents. Selling that project and teaching people what SQR is, that's the big, big lift that's in front of us right now. To get that word out there and to show proof of concept, we're going to do a demonstration in a Clive Park. We've selected the area just south of the tennis courts in Campbell that are right there along that little trail spur as well. About 10,000 acres, acres, 10,000 acres. It's a heck of a farm, Pete. 10,000 square feet that we'll be doing using some of the compost that we already have on hand. We'll be using a deep tie narration tool and a top spreader that we already have. So all the work for the demonstration will be done by staff. We've already got it all ready to go. You should expect to see some signage out in this area so we can start showing people what it looks like when it first goes on and then how it's incorporated into the soil and how that turf then comes back healthy, green and more resilient.
Where will that be relative to the softball field that's right there?
It's to the west of the softball field. So we won't be getting into that infield area there.
When's that, when's that project start, Pete?
April is when we're going to do that initial installation so that we're set up in May and June when people are thinking about one and yard projects, when they already are thinking about that, that's when we want to pitch them on doing SQR later on in the fall.
Pete, perhaps during Food Truck Fridays, we could have some type exhibit out there and get people to come over and take a look at that too. So we can really showcase that with the large crowds we're expecting.
Yep, you, that's a great idea, Councilman. Whether it's for this opportunity or any number of others, but you know, like Green Belt Landing fundraising or other big projects, we'll have a whole lot of storytelling to do at Food Truck Friday. Anytime we're convening people, we're going to have to be ready this year to tell them, we want to work with you in your yard. Two more that are areas that I know many of you, as you've been out and about the country recently, have heard quite a bit about potholes and then where are we at with Clark Street? So first potholes, we have two public works teams that are out all the time now, every day, just working on those streets and identifying those areas. The pothole map is updated, showing where we are doing work and also where we have capital work that's on the horizon for street patching and for some complete rebuilds like what we're doing on, on Harbach and on Clark. So I'd encourage you to let people know that that resource is out there. But the most important thing is as people identify these areas of concern, we need to hear about it. We want to hear about it. We can do our job better as they continue to engage with us. So please encourage them to keep reaching out to the city. And then we will quickly get crews out there to address those problem areas.
What are we using for pothole patching right now?
So this time of year, we're, none of the asphalt plants are opened up. So we are using cold patch material. When it goes in, it doesn't always look like it's a nice finished concrete, like new concrete or, or an asphalt overlay, but it is effective and it's what's available to us right now. So as we get into some of the warmer months, I would defer to Jeff, if you have more to want out on that, but there are other materials that we can consider at that point, but right now hot, our cold patches are best.
Yeah, the asphalt plants aren't open yet. We couldn't get asphalt if we wanted asphalt.
Yeah, the asphalt plants aren't open yet. We couldn't get asphalt if we wanted asphalt patching is more time consuming. It requires a lot more prep work and goes a lot slower. So in the middle of the throes that we are in now, where pothole season is upon us. It's fill and go. Surprisingly, the cold patch material is quite resilient. It does seem to last, may not look as pretty as some of the of the other work. But it is effective for what we're doing right now.
Jeff, when you start street ceilings then?
What's that?
Ceiling, crack ceiling.
Well, we're doing it now whenever we can fit it in. The colder months are better, cracks are a little wider, a little easier to get materials in, we'll use your blow the solids that are in there out. So we've done a little bit already this year and we'll continue fitting it in as our schedule allows.
So Clark Street, when we last spoke about this, it was really important to the council that we show the neighborhood progress. They'll have definitely be able to see the progress once we get the. Concrete crews out there and the folks who are going to be doing the next stage of the of the street reconstruction, but. We also have progress we can make on the vegetation and get sure those bio retention cells are starting to look good. The first step we can take though is getting trees planted. So we've got about fifty-five trees up and down the area of the corridor that has already been touched. Where we'll be going in and working with those property owners, those homeowners to put a stall a tree in the city's right of way. Now, the reason we can work. On the site on the house side of the sidewalk as opposed to curb between the sidewalk and the curb is because on Clark Street, we have a very large basement area. We've represented that this is part of the plan with the neighborhood consistently. But we know we'll still have some folks who have some concerns and especially want to make sure that they get a tree that they prefer. So we have seven species identified. They're resilient. They're native. We think they're going to create a great overstory in time. We are going to engage with those property owners to say, give us your preference and we will do our very best to accommodate that preference. I'm not going to be able to necessarily. Accommodate that preference a hundred percent of the time, but we want to do our best and we want to have a good conversation with those folks. We think there's a lot of variety. In the trees and that's important because we don't want a scenario like an Emerald Ash Bore situation where you could suddenly lose all of your canopy in one area because you just went with one species. So expected letters will be going out to the neighborhood here still in March or the first week of April. And that that we will be shooting to get those trees installed using a big volunteer team from Waki Elementary on Arbor Day, which is the last Friday. In April, so this is going to move quickly, but we're feeling pretty confident right now that we can get the trees that we need, that they'll be consistent with the specs. And that we will have a really good positive story to tell with those students out there and the homeowners who want to help us out as well.
Pete, what's the mechanism for citizen feedback on preference of trees? How are you going to handle that?
So we'll have people can we'll be able to write just physically. Mail back their preferences or get on the phone and talk to us, but we're hopeful that more people will take us up on an online opportunity. Right now that's either going to be an email depending on the size of the audience we're dealing with, or if we need to, we'll set up a form. And a dedicated webpage where folks will be able to come, get more information about the trees and then submit their preference.
You said fifty-five trees. Is that fifty-five households then that we're getting?
I need to go back and double check that, Councilman. I don't think it that many households that would get. I think there are a couple that are. Corners and maybe have two that are that are in there as well, right?
A lot of affected households.
It is. It's a lot of affected households. This is though how we do meet that stormwater requirement in part. The trees there can be very effective, especially as they get more mature, sucking up a lot of water.
And they can't be put in the bio soil area. There's no way to do that.
Well, there are. There's this thing such called a tree lined trench that you may have seen in other areas and Richard's on the call with us here tonight. And so let me unmute him just so he can. Essentially. Chime in on this because he knows this is the stuff as well as anybody. But right now our bio retention cells are not designed to have trees. At the bottom, we have different soils there and different plants that will be going in later on as we keep tuning up that landscaping bid. You recall, we didn't get any bids on that when we put it out on the street earlier this spring. We're going to retool that. Then I think when we put it out next time, based on feedback from contractors, that will be much more successful.
Anything else, Pete?
No, your honor. Thank you.
Are you sure? Do we not have some babies to talk about?
We have some babies to talk about.
Oh, were you gonna do that?
We do have some babies to talk about. If you go over to the parks maintenance, right now it's like a maternity ward. We have stalls or well, yeah, we have a.
It's up the street to the.
Our mothers and our new kids are all doing very well. We have as of this morning, two were just born. I was actually in the shop when they were born, which was exciting. Two more mothers who are still expecting and looking like they're at that point where they just need this to be done, right? They are ready to go.
Like a brothel. No, 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 no.
Maternity ward. So the goal, the gate, this is an exciting time because this always is a fun story to tell for the city. We're going to be rolling out the news about our kids and the growth of the herd. At the end of next week, we want to make sure that we keep the focus on the special election that's happening at the first part of the week. Goat stories have a way of running over every other story and we want to make sure that we do time these in a way that they complement each other. Don't trample on each other, but.
But watch out for write-in candidates, green belt goats.
Yeah, we don't need green belt goat writing.
Don't even mention. So you're done now, Pete?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Bell?
I'm wearing my green belt goat T-shirt tomorrow. I don't even care. So I just wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce because we had that candidate forum yesterday or as I was on Tuesday and. We packed that room, which I was really surprised about. I was very happy to see that many system participants. And the questions were great and we were able to show a friendly, nonpartisan response. And I think numerous people came up and mentioned that to both myself and my opponent and I was very, very proud of that.
Thank you. Ted?
Nothing tonight.
Yeah, like I said before, Councilwoman Bell and I had a chance to view the Clive Community Services. They've done some great work and I encourage everyone to take a tour over there. See the great job they're doing. Also, you might notice this right here. This is a remembrance of of the current situation, Ukraine. Back a number of years ago, I had an opportunity to work with both a Polish Ukrainian battle battalion over a NATO force over in Europe. And I'd like everyone to, we have a large NATO exercise going right now with a number of American troops in Poland. And I think everyone here is aware of the terrible situation, Ukraine. So I'd like to everyone to keep that in their thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Eric. I know some of the councils are passing resolutions of support. Is that something that we have an interest in doing or pursuing?
Very much so.
Nods around the table, Matt, so. Yep, look into that. I think West Des Moines may have already passed one.
And yeah, I have heard of a few.
So we'll, we'll have that for our next, our next, our next meeting.
On that, on that subject. Minor thing, but I know Altona, it was pretty neat, did their LED lights to their water tower. Something as simple as our bridge.
We have.
Haven't seen it.
On the eighty-sixth street bridge, I'm pretty sure I know we changed those to blue and yellow. So the pillars and we were trying to play around with the artist. Trying to get the configuring figured out for the public art that's in the lobby of the Public Safety Building to change that.
The LED lights in there?
The LED lights that at night that shine on the public art piece. So we're, we're working on it. We got, we got, we're halfway there. The, the program is a little harder on the public art one, but we're getting, we're going to work on it.
And she doesn't let me out after dark.
Good reason. Well, if you're up at four AM tomorrow morning. And watching channel thirteen, there may be a clip reminding you to vote in which you'll see me appear. It might also appear at five and at six and. Maybe.
Live every time?
No, 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 no. It was taped this morning. It was taped this morning. But they should, I think, post it to their website by, I think, ten AM is what they're playing. So you really don't have to get up at four, not that you would. But anyway.
That's great.
We talked for quite a bit of time and again, the bottom line is get out and vote on Tuesday. So well, we want to make sure we remind everyone to do that. On the good news. Side of things. And maybe Ted, you want to talk about the million dollars that's coming our way. Hopefully, if you do your job.
Yes, I can. Yeah, I can do my job. Thank you very much. At MPO, they did approve. Our I eighty thirty-five interchange or Hickman Road interchange, excuse me. For a million dollars. We did put in an ask for three point one. But knew this time around, we weren't going to get the full amount just because they didn't have enough funding. But we did get one million of that. And then we also got Alice's Road.
Waki was the lead applicant on that.
What was the amount on that one?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that's a portion of that first phase.
So there'll be additional rounds in the future and I'll obviously be monitoring that closely.
In your position as?
As the Secretary Treasurer. Thank you.
Wanted to note that for the record. So I think that's important to note because now that that's because you got is why we got it, but your leadership on that is. Partly.
It doesn't hurt.
It helps. Leading there and you've done it for quite some time. And with the new rules over there, it doesn't mean Clive gets a position, right?
Yeah, in some ways we're actually, we can be. A little downgraded in some of our ratings just because of our location as a western suburb. So. That's something that I monitor very closely as far as how they rate these projects and score them. Because in some cases it can be subjective and so I, I try to follow that very closely and how they're rating these projects.
Hate to say it, but well done Weaver.
Project scored very, I think eighty-five out of, so it scored very highly. So it has to go through exact and then the full MPO has to approve that.
At the next policy meeting. Susan.
Your honor, I'd just like to take a moment for point of personal privilege in thanking you for the proclamation. Recognizing Bob Justin Remembrance Week, of course. I have to say that Bob would have been really proud to have us passing the. Economic Vitality Committee during the week that he's being remembered because that was something that he thought was really good for Clive too. So thank you, my council member for recognizing me, but Bob would have been very happy to see it done too. So thank you very much.
I do not have anything sadly.
Sadly for whom?
Of all of you, I think.
Nothing from legal counsel. I believe it to you, Matt.
I have a few items for you this evening. As I mentioned on the the Urbandale, Alice's Meredith bid. Pending Urbandale's action at their next council meeting, that will come forward to you at the April fourteenth meeting for concurrence. Awarding that contract. And again, we've got a strategy now to to finance that at that excess amount for those bids. Want to also mention, I know a few of you have gotten back to me, but really want to look about two weeks from tonight on April seventh. At five PM to do the tour of the Harbach Center. If that works, I know the mayor, Susan and Ted, that works. For the other, the other three, if that works, we'd love to get that on the calendar, I think. And get that a meeting notice out to you on that and get it on your calendar. So. Five PM, just right at the end of the day and. Richard would give the tour. We've, the mural was finished and the community room looks really great. So it'll be awesome for you to see that. And give you a kind of a brief run through of everything that's going, going to be going on there, things that are already going on there and then much more to come. Here at the end of April and early May, so.
That works.
That work, works, works. All right. Got it locked down. I think Richard's on still, so he heard that. Well, I'll get a meeting notice out to you all before the end of the day today or the night tonight. I mentioned the legislative challenges. When I mentioned, when I talked about the new backfill. So back in two thousand thirteen, when the original property tax legislation was passed that had the commercial industrial rollback. Property tax rollback, there was another. Property tax credit in that legislation. It was a business property tax credit. It was funded and managed and handled directly by the state. What it does is the, it basically takes the first hundred and fifty thousand of value for a business. From the commercial taxing level of ninety percent down to the residential rollback level of about fifty-five percent. The state was administering it, the tax credit. Handling the paperwork. Well, allegedly they don't want to handle the paperwork anymore and manage it themselves. And so what they're looking at doing, it's in a Department of Revenue kind of technical corrections bill. And we're told that it's moving and likely to pass. That they will be basically turning it into a new rollback where they're going to fund it at a certain amount and that amount is not going to change. And depending on how the final legislation plays out, it already has a schedule, maybe potentially starting in FY two thousand twenty-nine where that funding would reduce. So again, I know we talk a lot of during the budget process, we've talked about how the commercial and industrial property tax backfills are already scheduled to whittle down. So that's why I wanted to mention it during the the budget approval process is we're going to have continued pressure on the revenue side and putting more pressure on property taxes. With these kinds of actions by the state. So again, that hasn't been approved yet or signed by the governor, but from what I'm hearing is it's likely to move forward, be approved. So just keep that in mind. Didn't know if there was anything specific that the council wanted to do to weigh in on that. We've made our delegation well aware of it. They're supportive. Of course, that isn't going to necessarily change what the final vote outcome is going to be on this piece of legislation. But the league is staying engaged on it. I know they're trying to amend the bill as it's being approved. How successful that'll be, I don't know at this point, but I wanted to definitely keep you apprised. Other than that, it's looking like. Could be a session ending here in the next couple of weeks. Don't know. They're already starting to work on their appropriation bill, so that's usually a signal that they're getting closer. Definitely probably want to get out early with being an election year. So. We'll see what else because to come, there's a couple of other bills that have been kind of hanging out there with. Some things that impact building codes and land use. They haven't moved at this point, but of course you know, at the end of the legislative session, there's a lot of things that happen very quickly. So we'll be continuing to monitor that. Lastly, then, starting tomorrow, I'll be on vacation for about the next nine days here. So Pete will be serving as the acting city manager while I am gone and I will be back on April fourth.
I do have a quick question for you, Matt.
When I'm gone. I will, I will be watching the special election results in Savannah, Georgia. So.
Well, speaking of which, I have a special, I have a question for you in regards to that.
Yeah.
So in your weekly update, you had mentioned the legal costs of an additional two thousand six hundred and I believe twenty-two dollars. There's another zero there.
Yeah, I had a typo on that one. Thank you.
But.
Elizabeth caught that for me as soon as I sent the email out and I was like, darn it.
I see now you guys called me out last time for.
I see how that works.
And that two thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars is on top of the initial fourteen thousand dollars that we were looking at.
It's basically Christina and her team's time, you know, going through all the legal, making sure that we're complying with all the legal requirements. As the special election was being proposed, evaluated, making sure we're complying with everything in the law that is her time, her team's time. Yes.
And that's only through February, correct?
Correct.
So we still have possible more of a bill coming?
Potentially. There hasn't been too as much work in March, thankfully.
So Matt, just. Just for the record then, the special election so far has cost the city of Clive and the taxpayers of Clive. Sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars of that nature. And the bill is still running as far as more legal fees. Is that correct?
It will be, we're anticipating it being around that amount. We don't know what the the actual election amount will be until after the election is had. That's based on the proposed or the anticipated numbers that the county shared with us. That would be correct. That does also not take into account the staff time. We didn't equate that in that number in terms of staff time. That's also.
So that that meter is still running then and obviously potentially more costs are expected.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'll go on the record again of saying. I'm okay with those costs when it comes to a special election and, you know, look, I think the legal council should be pro bono if they care about democracy, but. But, but when it comes to this frivolous stuff. That is eating up staff members' time, it does equal dollars. And it pulls them off of other things. And so the election is one thing, but the frivolous unfounded BS that's going on. Is something that irritates me as a resident, not just a council member. And that's got to stop and I'm not pointing at anybody because if you hear it and you're thinking, ugh, it's probably you. That has to stop in all elections, right? Not just the city, but it does equal dollars for staff. And other people. So that's, that's all. The election is, it is what it is.
That's part of the process, right? And it's baked in. So I totally agree with you. I'm okay with the cost. I don't like the other shenanigans. That's problematic.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll respectfully disagree. I, I agree with you the fact that I don't like shenanigans. However, I also don't like $16,000. That can fit a lot, that can fill a lot of potholes. That can fill a lot, that can do a lot for, that could give a lot of aquatic center passes out there as well. So, you know, it is, it's part of the process. Completely understand that. But I, I think there's much better uses for those tax dollars than what we're promising.
I'm going to, I'm going to break my silence on this. Because I know that it's, it's about me and it's about this seat. But I, I was in complete concurrence when it first started. I thought it was pretty odd when the, the signatures and the petition was being taken and then the candidates actually changed. And I'm like, those people signed that petition under the assumption of one person was going to be running and now that person didn't even run and it's completely different other person. How would that played out if they were aware of that? So I throw that out there. I again, $16,000, yes, that's, it's part of the, the process. I totally get it. But yeah, that was the one piece of the puzzle I thought was kind of odd.
Well, before we leave legislative issues, Matt, just a question on the new faces. We'll have new representation as far as a county supervisor and what kind of things will we be doing, you know, as, as when that change occurs and to be, you know, meet and greet or whatever, to get acquainted with them. I think Councilmember Klein had wondered about, you know, the legislative forums and when we could go back to those too late in this session to do that.
Right, right. And I know we've had some dialogue with the chamber and I think they're open to having those legislative forums. I think for them, it's more focused on their membership and from a business perspective. And this was even discussions they were having before the pandemic. So I think it'll be a question for this council for the next legislative session is as a city, do we want to serve as a, a forum or a facilitator for those? Cause I don't know who else would do it in the community, maybe the Lions Club, maybe there's other organizations that would serve for those settings, I think. And I understand why the chamber is doing it too, right? I think many times they've, they held those forums and there was very little talk about business related legislation. And I think for them, it was a question of what's for, what's the value for our membership? So I totally respect their, their position on that. So I think that's a question for this council and, and welcome that direction when we get in, as we head towards the next legislative session is how do you want the city to serve as facilitator or do we, you know, look at some other groups to potentially serve as a facilitator? I, I think we would be, if the council would prefer, maybe the city doesn't facilitate, but maybe provide a venue. I think that's definitely something we can do if there was another organization who wanted to, to host it, if you will. But again, all manner of those respects, we're, we're open and with all ears to, what the council may want to see on that.
But with the new faces, I think it's particularly important that we get out there and, and support it in one way or another.
Right. I know Supervisor McCoy was at the candidate forum the other night. I know he's been in the community knocking on doors. And so, yeah, we have that unique transition as well, you know, Supervisor Brownell being our supervisor for a very long time. I think Bob is still going to be very connected to our community as a former mayor. And so how we can, you know, work with our, our new supervisor will be something, I know he had a conversation with Pete that night about getting to understand, you know, Clive's items here in the short term. Depending on how that election plays out here later this year. And so we have a lot of changes coming and the same with legislative redistricting. There'll be a lot of changes potentially happening in the next six months and we'll have some catching up to do with new faces potentially representing our community, all levels of government. So.
I'd add that I appreciate all the candidates and incumbents who have been consistently showing up at a number of our events from the Public Safety Building opening to the candidate forum that we had on Tuesday. We really like to see folks with eyes on Clive. We've also, as we've been approached by candidates and incumbents, offered that even in advance of the election, we'll understand what the delegation is going to look like. We're happy to sit and meet with folks so that they can speak in an informed way about what's before the city. So Matt and I typically will take those meeting requests and then find a time also when the mayor is able to join us, hopefully if we can make all the schedules match up.
So timing wise, maybe after the November election and then before the session?
That's usually the window that we really look to do those, those kinds of meetings and particularly prior to that January, you know, we've even done them in, as it gets into early January, just depending on schedule, as long as we hit it before the legislative session is usually what our focus is. And then regarding the legislative forum, usually the West Side chambers, you know, always have that forum right prior to the session starting or right as the session is starting. And typically historically, we've had tried to have a forum that the chamber used to do kind of in the middle of the session. It was usually late February, early March timeframe. So again, depending on what the council wants to do there, you don't need to answer it or provide direction. Like we've got plenty of time to talk and think about that.
At the Walnut Ridge one?
Yeah, we, we did it at Walnut Ridge. I think it was at a couple of different locations over, over, it was mainly at Walnut Ridge though, that we could
Decent attendance for those.
Yeah.
It's a good place to have.
Yeah. And so we, yeah, we've got time to talk about it and how you all want to proceed with those kinds of things and having that, you know, those forums and we'd be able to support it any way we can.
Very good. Any other items for the, the order this evening? Hearing none, we'll adjourn at 7:15.